Oh, yeah.
I have to do my, uh, my little summary sheet.
Did you get from Chuck, uh, Chad?
Hi.
No, sorry.
Hate when that happens.
I was sober and he told me that, um, the person who's supposed to moderate was feeling sick. He was like, "Do you know what I'm gonna do or whatever?"
Oh, no.
And so I volunteered you.
Oh, yeah, no.
Yeah, but I wasn't planning on heading over there after this.
I know.
That's all right.
So we're gonna start with City Development and Planning?
Yeah, he didn't give a touch of me, so I assume he had a certain plan.
All right. We're gonna have to ask him, or else he'll be here. He probably started calling everybody.
Um, I'll text him.
Oh, okay. Let's, uh...
Hi, how are you?
Talked to Mr. Ackerman today. I guess they had a nice weekend.
Yeah, yeah, they got skiing Friday night. I went over Sunday night after the Moonlight's thing, 'cause June and Edward were here, so...
That's what he said, and he said a lot of times they just, like, pass on the road.
Ordinary as hell. Yes, I'm not really high, and I don't mind that kind of stuff at all.
That's why you want to talk to him.
Yes, but I'm not headed out.
Jack Arneke, I think I heard something saying that he was the moderator, 'cause Jack...
He told me before he was talking, he was just gonna talk the whole time around.
You know, he, he served the board of the head of it.
Carl, were you serious about the moderator being sick?
Who was it?
Jack Arneke.
Oh!
Jack Arneke.
Well, maybe he was giving him the heads up and said, "Never mind him."
Yeah.
Carl came to the meeting last night, so I'm not sure he'll be there.
I wonder when he knew, because I saw him lunchtime, he didn't...
Oh, Jack, you mean?
Yeah, knew about it.
Carl Erickson texted me last night and said, "I'm running late, start without me."
Oh, true.
And I'm like, "Um..."
Don't think so.
You're done, your day ahead.
All right, well, until he gets there, I'm gonna call City Development and Planning to order. Item number one is a resolution recognizing Habitat for Humanity.
Yes. Um, the Habitat for Humanity, as we know, has been doing some great work in the Goose Hill area with some neighborhood revitalization, and not so much recognizing habitat specifically as habitat, but rather their wonderful neighborhood revitalization efforts. And certainly, we'll hope the Goose Hill people will join us as well that day, so that's what that is.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Uh, let's see. I'll move it.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Also, Chuck has a revised committee thing for this, which of course will be revised one more time after this, but...
Thank you.
So, anyone who didn't get one? Send one down to Mr. Winkler, too. All right, item number two, recognizing the Historic Street Sign Initiative. Ms. Praso again?
Yes, um, you know, Beth Peta, and I hate to just sing loud that, she would be very upset to hear me say that, but she has been putting a tremendous amount of time and effort into placing beautiful historic street signs in some of the historic districts around the city. It's an ongoing effort for her and several partners, and I think to gain recognition, to continue to gain recognition, and also thank her for all her efforts toward beautifying the city, it would be a nice thing.
Mm-hmm, yes, it would.
So I've moved that if no one's opposed.
All right, second by Ms. Porterfield. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, calling for a public hearing on the sidewalk courts. St. Malo.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're hoping to call for a public hearing to amend section 22882 of the city code. That has to do with streets and sidewalks, sidewalk and outdoor cafes, specifically clear and safe path. What we're looking to do is, for the most part, define and put into the code what an ADA accessible route is, as well as allow brick to be counted as an ADA accessible surface, which it is. It also puts in there a requirement that if you wish to use the brick area to count towards your current safe path for your sidewalk cafe, that you must maintain the brick and stay clear of defects and, you know, defects a quarter inch or more, which would be a triggering hazard. This is primarily just to kind of clean up our code a little bit, so that we can have a little bit more flexibility with allowing sidewalk cafes in areas such as downtown.
Questions? Ms. Praso.
Um, speaking of the brick areas, they certainly look lovely, the brick crosswalks and things that are put in, they look lovely, but we've had so many problems with them in places where they need to be ripped up, or they're just really difficult to pass over, or have we ever thought of just not having that, or just limiting it to stamped pavement, or... I mean, we really had quite a mess on Seward Place, and there's some other places where it's kind of weird, too.
Your experience on our...
Yeah, it's just, I mean, it looks beautiful, and that, but in the wonderful northeast, where we have freezing and thawing, freezing and thawing. I mean, maybe, is that something we should look at as a council?
Well, we are looking at that. That is, I mean, that is separate from what this is.
Oh.
This is, this actually is brick.
Yes.
Physical brick. What you're looking at is an inlay dermalplasty that is stamped...
Right.
...to look like brick. And one of the problems we've had with that was a company that put that in that is no longer in business. They were using a product that did not meet the material specifications of other products, and in certain areas where that was put in, we have had problems with that. We are looking at alternatives, because that does have a bad kind of nomenclature, has a bad bubby. One of the products that we are looking at is the product that we're demoing for free, the demo that we did last year, which is over by Proctor's in between Stratton Plaza and the parking garage. That product is melted into the asphalt. It is not separate, it's not an integral outside piece, whereas what you're looking at is it's actually inlaid into, you mill out a small surface and it sits in there. We have had problems, some other areas have had problems, but we're looking, we're looking into that, but that is separate from...
Okay, so the brick itself hasn't had an issue with?
Certain brick areas, J Street is one. J Street is all brick. That's the kind of brick that we're talking about.
Okay.
With regards to the amendment of this code, it would be for areas such as State Street right here, where we actually have physical brick. We have had interest from places such as Zen, which currently has one, it's much smaller than they wanted to do because of this ordinance, 'cause right now, as it stands, city code only counts concrete as an ADA accessible walk. So they are not allowed to count the brick. This is, we, you know, I've looked it up, we looked at ADA, it does accept brick as long as it's maintained in a good condition. So this would be, you know, as long as they have a five-foot minimum clear path, which it states in here, and I've been working with, uh, Mr. Strickman on this, they would be allowed to maintain their sidewalk cafe in such a way. But this is for brick. This is not, this is also, it says exclusive of curbing, planting, hydrants, you must have that five-foot clear path.
Okay.
So again, we're just calling for a public hearing.
I will, sir.
Okay, just a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And final review, the alternative lot size. Mr. Strickman.
Okay, so this is the end of the public hearings session, and this was our attempt to make it easier for the city to sell vacant lots to people who they can consolidate vacant lots into their parcel without going through an expensive surveying and consolidation process. It allows, it allows the city to waive all the requirements for certain consolidations of residential lots, so the public hearing's already been held. This will help us get rid of a lot of our vacant lots that people don't want to buy and then pay fifteen hundred dollars to have them consolidate them into their lots.
Okay, any questions on this? Not all, notation, motion moves forward. Okay, Ms. Porterfield?
Second.
Second by Ms. Praso. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, if there's nothing else to come, before City Development and Planning, all in taking the motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Okay, second by Ms. Porterfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you for giving your direction. Call the vote for Finance Committee. First item up is the following, it has my name on it, the... I'm not sure. You're the chair.
Yeah, this was obviously, I think we all saw the resume for Doug Williams, and he's very interested in serving on that, so I'm recommending his appointment.
Great. Someone willing to work for the city, that's great. Is there a second? I'd like to second. Excellent, we got first, we got a second. Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Look at that. Doug Williams, it's a lucky day. Any, just anything else to report? I'd like to...
I'll move. Will you adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Next one up, Administrative Efficiency. I think I'm the chair there. Snow emergency procedures. So, this is one, just several people have been asking, and I thought it'd be a timely, hopefully kind of enough topic to put on here, and just in terms of understanding what our procedures are, when we call for snow emergency, what the public's responsibilities are during snow emergency, and not during a snow emergency, but when it snows, and so, I'm not sure if we've got...
Mr. Olson is here?
Mr. Olson's here. We can kind of talk to it.
And as I think I've said to many of you, this has been a conversation that has been ongoing over the years, so this is not the first time it's come up.
But I think it's been educational, educational information, so...
These snow emergencies, and when, whether to, the timing of which to call, is not just my decision by any means, but the decision, we would get together, the mayor, myself, the chief of police, or the commissioner of police, the fire chief, and discuss issues that we were anticipating to have or already having, associated with our ability to be able to effectively go out and perform service to keep our roadways safe and travel, enabling individuals to be able to travel them throughout snowstorms. So, it's not necessarily the volume of snow that a storm brings. Snowstorms have minds of their own. The rate that the snow falls, in a sense, a storm where you get snow that falls at three inches per hour, and you get twelve inches of snow versus a storm where the snow, it snows a half of an inch per hour to get the same quantity, you're going to make some decisions and do things a lot differently in those two scenarios. The temperatures before, during, and after the event. When does it occur? Does it start at seven o'clock at night and end at two in the morning? Or does it start at four in the morning and not end until two days later? All those things are taken into consideration when determining whether or not to issue a snow emergency. We have, what is on the books for snow emergency, I think they'll pass that out. We have not declared a snow emergency in a very long time. As the general services commissioner for the city, and my tenure here, as that, in that position, ten years almost, we've never declared one before that. I think the Jozinski administration was the last snow emergency that was declared. It can be problematic. It's not necessarily the answer to the problem. I don't know if we have the internal resource to be able to more effectively remove snow from our streets after issuing a snow emergency than we do by following the posted parking regulations that are already in place, which is what we've been going through. I work together with the police department's traffic division, and going out with the existing parking regulations that are in place, and ticketing and towing individuals that are in violation of those regulations. If you're out and about, which you probably aren't, but if you are out and about during snowstorms, that once we get three inches of snow, they go to work on our priority streets, clearing vehicles. I took the mayor out for a ride the last significant snowfall that we had. The storm started at about, I think it was midnight, one o'clock in the morning. At ten o'clock at night, following day, we'd been working for about twenty hours, twenty-one hours. Our priorities, you could have landed a 747 jet in our priority streets. I mean, they were cleared curb to curb. Police department did an extremely good job of clearing those priority streets of their vehicles. Our alternate side parking streets, we had some issues with some people in violation, but most of those also had been addressed, and our roads were in pretty good condition. They really were. They were in extremely good condition for that short duration of a storm that lasted a long time. The biggest problem, to be very honest with you, that we're having is not our parking restrictions. The biggest problem we're having is individuals pushing snow back into the road after the road has been cleared. Whether that be homeowners blowing their sidewalks, or their driveways into the road, or business owners, worse, worse yet, business owners pushing their parking lots and their space, their areas into the roadway after we've been through to clear it. And then we push it back, and they push it back, and we push it back, and it's a, it's a continuous battle until one of us wins. It's usually us, 'cause our, we have bigger equipment. That can be very frustrating. It's costing the taxpayers additional money, because again, once we've cleared the road, if people didn't throw snow in it, we wouldn't have to clear it again. So it's gonna save us a significant amount of money if people would follow the rules and not let the snow pull the road away.
What's the fine for doing that? I know they've said, "Oh, you know, fine them," and we'd look, "Oh, no fine them," and be...
The water department head has given us paperwork, and we have gone out, and we have issued that paperwork to individuals, notices telling them you can't do that. So we do have nurses, inspectors that are out doing that, police departments out doing that. We are notifying individuals that you can't do that, and you are subject to fine in the process of doing that.
The fine is up to five hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's pretty significant. Now, in all, in all fairness, and there are times when people just run out of space to put the snow, whether it be private property owners or us, it's the city. You have very small snow storage areas in some parts of the city, a little strip between the curb and the sidewalk. That inhibits our ability to effectively plow streets sometimes. For example, you get three or four six-inch snowstorms in a row, or five-inch snowstorms in a row, and you don't get any melt in between. Temperatures are like they are out here now. This happened to us a couple of years ago, where we had a number of not huge snowstorms, and I've said over the years, you don't need a twenty-four, twenty-eight, or thirty-inch snowstorm to trigger the need for snow removal. You get several small storms in a row without any melt in between, and we get into a situation where in particular, certain areas of the city become very difficult to travel through, areas like the Stockade, where streets are narrow to begin with, areas like behind St. Mary's Church, up by the museum. There are a number of areas in the city, we have snow removal lists that normally require snow removal before any other area. I am intimately familiar with when we need to do it, because our garbage trucks that have to travel these streets start having difficulty getting in and out of them to pick up the trash. If we're having difficulty, a fire truck would have difficulty. I stay in communication with the fire department and ask them, "Are you having issues anywhere?" Getting on calls with emergency rigs, and they will tell me if they are having an issue. An issue, but normally, we pick that up with our waste collection equipment beforehand, and we will post those areas into snow removal. We did snow removal for six consecutive weeks several, three or four years ago, when we had that issue with where it didn't melt. This year, we've had a couple of major storms, over a foot of snow, but we've gotten warm weather afterwards, and the majority of it melted before it got excessively cold again, and then we've got more snow. So that seems to be the cycle this year. Right now, there's not a lot of snow on our streets, so there's space again for the storage more, more snow. Not a lot of snow in people's properties, a lot of it melted, so there's space again for them to be able to pile more snow. I don't know if I'm helping you here...
No, it's good. I mean, if anybody has questions, I think this is more of an open dialogue, so feel free to...
I have a question. You talked about the alternate parking in, in our last snowstorm, or maybe the one before that, actually got phone calls regarding that people, they weren't getting their streets plowed because they didn't have alternate parking, you could just park wherever you wanted to.
There are some, there are streets in the city that it's legal to park on either side of the street. There's a number of streets on Mount Pleasant that are like that.
It was Mount Pleasant.
Where it is, it is legal, and the streets can be somewhat narrow.
Yes.
And we can have some real difficulty appropriately clearing those roads. It ends up looking like a, like a snake path, rather than a clear-cut route on those streets. The irony of that is, the majority of those streets that it's legal to park on both sides of the road, the individuals that live on those streets have driveways. And during these snow events, in many instances, the vehicles are not parked to the driveway, the vehicles are parked in the road. As a resident of those streets, I would much prefer to have my car in the driveway and get the road plowed that I have to drive on every day, rather than leave it out on the road. I don't understand why people are gonna leave their vehicles out on the road. In some instances, they'll leave the vehicle in the road, park directly across from one another. They're making it extremely difficult for us to be able to get equipment through. Again, if we can't effectively go through and get the street plowed, we'll post those streets, and we'll go in and do snow removal.
Can you, can you make the street have alternate parking?
The problem with changing streets to alternate parking, in some instances, like I think, Marion, we talked about Avenue H. Avenue H. Brick candidate for alternate side parking. The way the code is written, the residents of that street would petition city government. You get more than fifty percent of the residents to say they want alternate side parking, they could get it. Or, we could go in and say, "You know what? We want to designate this street alternate side parking," and we could designate it. So we have those options. Part of the problem designated as alternate side parking is you're reducing the number of available parking spaces. I would love, I would have, I would be very happy if in the city of Schenectady, a number, almost every road in the city of Schenectady was also side parking, because then I know that I could at least get snow removal equipment and street sweepers onto the other side of the street periodically to perform maintenance work. Again, in order to do that, you're gonna restrict parking. Great examples of that, Park Place in the city, Emmett Street in the city. They're wide streets, it's legal to park on both sides. We can usually get through a couple of snowstorms, even with people parked on both sides of the street, before it becomes problematic and we have to post those streets for removal. Again, those would be a type on the list for candidates for removal, because they have parking available on both sides.
Just, just a matter of perspective, not that one thing is, you know, right and one thing's wrong, but I live on a street where there's parking on both sides of the street. I do not have a driveway. I, my house just doesn't have one. I would hate having alternate side street parking, because it means that I have to worry about when I move my car. It has, means that, again, the, the number of parking spots are reduced, so then I probably won't be able to park in front of my house, or somewhere close to my house, and I don't know if you know, but I usually get home after dark. You know, and so, take those things into consideration, too. I understand the issues, because I park on the street three hundred and sixty-five days a year, whether we have snow, whether we don't have snow. So I get it. Unfortunately for me, I live on a pretty wide street, but it, it takes some thought process with my neighbors for us to make sure that we're not parked across from each other, or we have paths for the plows to go through, or whatever, so, you know, people need to think all the way around when it comes to alternate side street parking. It sounds a great idea in the winter, but every single day, when you're charged with moving your car at a certain time of day, if you don't have a driveway, it's tickets, it's, you know, issues in that respect, too, which can be a lot more costly than a little bit of extra snow on the street, so, just, just food for thought.
If I had my way, there'd be no parking on any city street. As humorous as that may sound, that is the, what is in effect on the county roads and then the town street roads.
Makes it easier.
There's no parking allowed on the town streets, there's no parking allowed on county roads when you have a snowstorm. Therefore, they have nothing in their way. If anything happens to be there, it gets towed away very quickly. God bless them, they're able to plow their roads, get them back to the curb, and then homeowners get shuttled out, they usually can get through a storm much quicker than if you had eight thousand cars in your way that you're trying to deal with, in addition to people throwing the snow back into the road.
I have a question. There have been some concern about the speeding of these, these snow plows, speeding through the street, creating potholes, and recently resurfaced...
We should not be ever driving faster than the speed limit. As a matter of fact, we should be probably going during a snowstorm slower than the speed limit. We instruct our plow drivers to not drive recklessly by any means. The type of precipitation that you're plowing, if you have a very wet, sloppy snow, it'll come off of a blade, a snowplow blade, and it'll may look like the truck was going faster than it was, because it'll travel much further than light snow. When you don't have snowbanks, and this year, we don't keep snowbanks long. Thank God, I like the fact that they know. The downside to that is, while we pick up snow storage, there's nothing that stops the snow from when it comes off the plow, from going on people's sidewalks. Again, there's a very small area between the curb and the sidewalk that you have for snow storage. So we get a number of complaints from residents that we're pushing the snow from the street onto their sidewalks. I even get residents that tell me that, when an idiot we are, why don't we turn and play the other way? So we would then plow the snow to the middle of the road. Geez, can't do that. So again, it, I can understand where people get upset. We have elderly people in the city, it's very difficult, they can't do it themselves. They have to hire a service. So they, we have a snowstorm, they hire the service, they spend a lot of money that they don't really have. The service comes, they do the job. The guy up the road blows all of his snow off to the street, then he moves his car that's in the road, this bend of the road that we had to drive around. Our plow comes back through, takes the snow that he just blew from his sidewalk and driveway onto the road, as well as the snow that's laying up by the curb because we couldn't plow, because that car was in the way, and we push it back onto the elderly person's sidewalk that paid the snow service to come and, well, and, and take care of their sidewalks. So obviously, they get upset. We blame them. It, it's extremely difficult, there are a lot of conflicts, as you said, Lisa. You say, "Well, it's simple, just put in parking restrictions, that'll, that'll make it easier." A, that's going to affect people's quality of life and urban environment, parking is that a premium, in particular, not where, where we are suffering from our success in our downtown. It's nice to have limited parking, but that means there's a lot of people here. They're doing things, they're spending money, they're, they're frequenting our businesses. It becomes very difficult to keep those priority streets open during major snow events, when you have twenty-five hundred people downtown to see a Proctor show, and go out to dinner and do all those things. We want people to be able to go to a Proctor show, go to dinner at Johnny's or any restaurant downtown, enjoy themselves, whether or not we're having a snowstorm. So that's kind of what we are attempting.
Carl, in the absence of the, the alternate parking, and I, in my, from my perspective, when I talk about alternate parking, I'm only talking about when there's a snowstorm, not all year long, because that's, that's how it was brought to me.
It's a snow emergency, that's what's supposed to be.
That would be a snow emergency.
Which we don't declare. Okay, so, and that, so if there's a, a lot of snow piled up, how does one get their street posted? I mean, what would the process be if somebody said, "There's just too much snow on our street," you know, do they contact City Hall? What is the measure for that? I'm gonna, there's another part to the question, too.
The measure, we determine when a snow needs snow removal.
Uh-huh.
The residents know. We determine it based on our ability to safely travel that road with trucks, with ambulances, with fire trucks, with, if we can get our garbage trucks and fire trucks and paramedic rigs and the different vehicles through these streets, then everyone else should be able to do the same. If it becomes unsafe, where vehicles can't safely get up and number up, then obviously we need to post either sections of, or the entire block, or the entire street to have the snow removed.
And in terms of the piles of snow that end up, usually streets with medians, they end up there on the corner. What, what is, I mean, at what point do we say, "We gotta get that down," because, you know, people say that they can't see, I mean, traffic around the corner and all of that.
We get complaints from individuals, but we do go out to our island streets automatically after snowstorms to remove snow from the island tips. For that reason, exactly, you're absolutely right. You want to make sure there is visibility for individuals. If you, if you take Eastern Parkway, for example, and you're pulling out of Wright Avenue, and you're trying to make a left to go down towards Price Jumper, and you have a huge glob of snow, where the individuals can't, you can't see people coming down Eastern Parkway, so you're pulling out to make the turn, and then all of a sudden, cars come. We'd like to keep those mags down so people have lines of sight, so that they can safely make left-hand turns, or right-hand turns when pulling out of side streets. We do that with the available personnel and equipment after the storm has stopped. Sometimes that's at night, sometimes it's during the day. A lot of people don't like us out there at night, because there's a backup alarm on the loader, so we'll get complaints if we do it at night. During the day, there's traffic, it can be very difficult to remove snow on those occasions during the day, so we, we try to create a balance.
That's the question that's come by me the most from people, is Albany declares snow emergencies on a regular basis. They get six inches of snow, they declare a snow emergency. People in Albany find a place to park on the other side for that one time, you know, for the twenty-four hour period, that's what they do.
For that reason, exactly, you're absolutely right, you want to make sure there is visibility for individuals. If you, if you take Eastern Parkway, for example, and you're pulling out of right avenue, and you're trying to make a left to go down towards Price Jumper, and you have a huge glob of snow, where the individuals can't, you can't see people coming down Eastern Parkway. So you're pulling out to make the turn, and then all of a sudden, cars come. We'd like to keep those mags down so people have lines of sight, so that they can safely make left-hand turns, or right-hand turns when pulling out of side streets. We do that with the available personnel and equipment after the storm has stopped. Sometimes that's at night, sometimes it's during the day, a lot of people don't like us out there at night, because there's a backup alarm on the loader, so we'll get complaints if we do it at night. During the day, there's traffic, it can be very difficult to remove snow on those occasions during the day, so we, we try to create a balance.
That's the question that's come by me the most from people is, Albany declares snow emergencies on a regular basis. They get six inches of snow, they declare a snow emergency. People in Albany find a place to park on the other side for that one time, you know, for the 24-hour period, that's what they do. That's the question that comes to me all the time, why does Albany do it and Schenectady doesn't? I know that's not your call, but why don't we?
When Albany does that, they tow three or 400 vehicles, for sure. I don't believe that we have the external resource to tow three or 400 vehicles. I don't believe it exists. We have one tow company that we are dealing with, Holmes and Cooper currently, I don't believe that they have the resource to go out and tow three or 400 vehicles. But again, that's a question we want to talk to the dispatch division about.
Could we call in other tow services in an emergency situation? There's other tow services, Rotterdam's got two or three.
They're probably busy. You would have to have some type of, an arrangement with them in advance, so you could guarantee them to be here, because they probably have their work that they're performing, as well. People normally don't have the extra equipment sitting around, waiting for us to have a snow emergency.
But there is, I know tow services, they're chomping at the bit to tow cars, that's what their job is, and they have the equipment.
And they, they're probably pretty busy right now, or they probably wouldn't be in business long. But again, those are things you have to look into.
I mean, that's a question that comes to me, I don't know if it's come to any other council people, but I get that all the time. Why does Albany do it? Why doesn't Schenectady?
I don't know if Albany's streets were any better than ours, in the last couple of snowstorms, in the big snowstorms, the bigger storms that we had. As a matter of fact, I had people, I knew people comment that they weren't as good at that. So I don't necessarily know, again, if you, if people aren't going to follow the regulations, you're not, it's not going to help you to tell everybody to park over here, so I can clear this side of the street, if only half the people move. Because now I can't clear either side of the street. Now every street in the city of Schenectady looks like the ones that you can park on both sides. It is not going to help us if people are confused, because during the snow emergency, that odd even, that alternate side parking goes away. Your parking restrictions on priority streets go away, unless, of course, you post and enhance it even more, which you could do. But that confusion can cause individuals to not know which side of the street to park on, and now you have difficulty plowing either side. So I don't necessarily know if doing that is guaranteed to be an improvement over what we're currently doing. It also requires you to be out there for a period of at least 48 hours, a minimum of 48 hours. It would probably be more than that for major storms. We don't have the personnel to work more than 48 hours, without them getting additional rest. I mean, I can only work people 16 hours, and they have to go home. I have a grand total of about 15 people on street corner, and I augment them with people from the water and sewer agencies during this type of weather, with the temperatures as they are. Our water and sewer maintenance divisions are busy doing their own thing, so I can't afford to burn them all out, so I have no one available for a water break, or for a plowed sewer. So with the resource that we have available to us, the cost, if you look at the budget and what they're spending, and these other agencies that have these snowstorms, the cost is much higher than it is here for what we're performing. So, again, I don't know, I think you want to look into it before you think that that's necessary, the best we can do.
I'm not saying it's necessary, I'm saying that's the question that we get posed us, that's the question.
It's a fair question.
It's a good question.
Fair question.
It is. Now, secondly, what can we do about people that are putting the snow that you guys plow back into the street? Because that's the other complaint I get. Where do we get the enforcement from? Who do we lobby for this? You, the police department? Who, who's, who's in charge of taking people for doing that?
Like, we did, um, we had one ticket so far from the police department. Police department definitely can write it. In terms of enforcement, it's really hard, because people call, they're going to complain, they're going to say, I saw this happen, but you got to give a statement from a person, generally they've got to come down to the precinct, to sign all that, they've got to be able to identify who exactly is doing it, when it happened, just seeing a pile of snow in the street, you know, you know where it came from, you don't know who did it, just because somebody lives there.
The question I got, Carl, is, people ask, who do I call? So who should they call? Police department? The law department? General Services? Who do they call? If they want to complain about somebody blowing snow or throwing snow in the street?
Call somebody.
They call me.
That's the problem, because two of mine do it on a regular basis, so who do I call?
That's my question.
Um, we do get phone calls like this, and we do, I don't want to say investigate, but we respond to them, hopefully it's in time to manage. Sometimes you're right in the middle of a snowstorm, and they're plowing the streets, or now, like, after the fact, when the police streets are plowed. We do write tickets periodically, we do give a lot of advisements from the officers out there, that might be just else arrived, you know, guys pulling snow blowing into the street, pull up alongside of them, and they haven't turned the snow, we also tell them, you know, hey, listen, you can't do this. We do that more often than tickets, don't get me wrong. It's just one of these officers aware of, and we do, sometimes time issue, but usually it's extreme circumstances that I don't worry about anyway. But have them call us, because we do go out there and follow. If there's nothing else, we knock on the door, and then we subtract where, or sometimes even dispatch, we're calm, depends on the body of the calls we have that day, and so forth. It's just sometimes just a phone call, we say it works, but we put on notice that, you know, someone's complaining about it.
Well, I think that's a good idea, in terms of, you know, if we get the call, or somebody says, hey, they're doing, it's dangerous. Not just, hey, with more work for the city crew, it's dangerous, you're down on the road, and the road is clear except for one area, because you could spin out and have an accident. If the dispatch or police department follows up the phone call saying, hey, don't do it again, you know, we can't, we didn't witness it, what kind of gives the warning, and hopefully that message gets out, and people stop doing it.
It's also not just them pushing it into the road, but pushing it into the right way. And what I mean by that is, a business will push their snow into an intersection, out to the sidewalk of an intersection. That happens to be the same sidewalk that you have a crossing guard, and 100 kids that are going through a pier at, at quarter to seven in the morning. So we will prioritize with our nuisance inspectors, the crossing guard locations, the very first areas that we go out and inspect, to make sure that people are not pushing snow into those locations. And we have crews that go out and remove the snow from those locations, so that...
The same place pushes the snow in there all the time. We're Broadway lunches, that happens all the time.
And we have had those individuals cited, because that, again, they are now putting pedestrians in safer areas. So it, to, to use some common sense, and to understand that it isn't appropriate to do that is going to go a long way. Again, most people want to get rid of it. They don't have a lot of real estate, they do not have services that halt the way for them. So when they run out of room on their own property to put it, they're going to put it on someone else's. Or, better yet, it's 2 o'clock in the morning, there's nobody around, I'm going to push it off, out of my parking lot, out onto the road, and the city plow will pick it up and carry it away. I mean, it's not difficult to go out and look at businesses that do not have one crumb of snow in their parking lot, after a one-foot snowstorm, it is, it snowed from 4 o'clock in the morning until 4 o'clock in the afternoon, and you go there at 6 o'clock in the afternoon, and they don't have any snow? And they have said, I didn't push my snow in the road, okay, then where did you do this? Where did it go? Did it just fly off to the heavens? Did it just decide not to snow on your particular parcel, or did you push it out in the street? I mean, please don't do that, because again, now I have to pull equipment, it takes us a lot longer to get off of our priority streets and into our secondary streets, if people keep throwing the snow onto the priority streets. It just takes us longer, we have to use more salt, more time, no more.
Another thing to consider about alternate parking along with what Lisa's touch, boulevards. We have quite a few boulevards. It's tough enough to plow the snow the way it is now. If we do alternate side street parking, there's some people, like Lisa, that don't have driveway. And we're going to ask them to go someplace else while we plow, and really, there's not many places to go. So, all the boulevards, you know, you see where the cars parked there, it's a terrible situation, which way are you going to plow the snow? If you plow to the right, you're plowing the cars in. It's difficult, but I don't know that we're going to make it better by doing alternate side of street parking, you know, because people just don't have any place to park the car.
And there are many areas of the city where people abide by the parking regulations, where people will keep their vehicles in the driveway, where we don't have these issues. So to put all, everyone through the same ordeal.
Snow emergency.
Snow emergency ordeal is not necessary in every street in the city of Schenectady. It would have a much greater impact in the city if people stopped throwing their snow on the road, a much greater event. There are some areas where, I don't care what you do, I don't care what regulations you have, you're going to have problems, you're going to have issues. And the police department has worked, again, with us very effectively in addressing, in particular, those priority street areas. I think we should...
But you know, the priority street areas, I live on a priority street, it's fine, but it's one of the widest streets in Bellevue, along with Broadway, where I live. The problem that people complain about is the narrower streets where they can't get through, that's where the problems come in. And some of those, like you said, the streets of Mount Pleasant, have parking on both sides, but as you pointed out, those people have driveways too.
They're giving themselves immensely...
Maybe they sell brains, I don't know.
Getting their vehicles out of the road when they know that there's going to be a snowstorm, so that we have the capability of appropriately plowing the street. Again, if there's a situation where I can't get my, if I can get my garbage truck down your street, you ought to be able to get your passenger vehicle down your street. If a situation exists where I can't get the waste collection equipment down the road, I have to address it. When I say I have to address it, they may be, I may have to post that block, I may have to post one side of the street on that block, and then go there with a loader and a dump truck and remove the snow. That doesn't necessarily mean I've got to remove the entire snow of every street and the entire neighborhood, we do not have the resource to do that.
We don't want to pay for it.
You don't have to, what you do on...
Well, I think, you know, for a couple of streets that we've talked about that have parking on both sides, and it's up to those residents really, right? They're the ones that would be impacted the most, so, you know, if you're asked about it, you talk to those residents and say, this is your option, communicate amongst yourselves, and if that's what everyone wants, then we can make it a one-side parking. But if everyone would prefer to have two-side parking, then maybe it's something that they could just communicate and coordinate during the snowstorm, and say, hey, let's, everyone just, you know, follow my lead, and everyone goes on one side.
If we have such horrible issues, we, if it's responsible to clear those roads, have such horrible issues on a regular basis, we will make that determination. We have to. I have not had to tell John Caluccio that I absolutely, without a doubt, need a street change to alternate side parking in some time. So we are able to, is it, is it perfect? Yeah. Is it, can it be inconvenient? Yes, this is the northeast, and we're talking about narrow streets, where you get significant amounts of snowfall, people have very little of their own private property to put their snow, pile their snow in. There's a lot of issues here, that cause issues on the street. We keep the streets safe for passage, if they're not safe, we'll do something about it.
Any other questions, Paul?
I just want to say, you talked about the priority streets, I just, you know, we had a situation with J Street pedestrian walkway, this, this, one of the snowstorms, so that, that just is, you know, we make sure that's a priority, because we ended up hearing from the business owner, and that the snow had to be cleared.
It was not our responsibility to remove the snow from the J Street pedestrian walkway. We did it because we happen to have snow removal crews in this area anyway. We plow the center of the J Street pedestrian walkway, the merchants are supposed to plow or shovel the lead walks in their sidewalk areas. There is snow storage areas on the street. A number of people want to be able to drive their vehicles up and down J Street pedestrian walkway, to be able to deliver and pick up for their businesses. It really wasn't, it's not meant for that. You're not supposed to be doing that, and with the amount of snow that was on it, that became very difficult. So I think some people objected as, because of that. There's other legitimate issues, but that snow will melt during the day, and then freeze at night. So you, you treat the area, you plow and treat it, it's great during the day, we go home for the evening. It melted during the day, so it's wet because of the salt, or the calcium chloride that we've applied. That evening, it refreezes, it becomes slippery, and individuals have difficulty traveling along it. The next morning, we come in and salt it. Again, by removing it, it's not going to melt, you get rid of the source of the, of the problem, and it's better for everyone. So we were able to get it removed, actually, Metroplex had their maintenance person remove it. I asked them to assist us, they did it, they were in the area of doing snow removal anyway, so they, they took care of that. But again, that was not our work.
So on a regular basis, it's, who's, who's, are you saying it's Metroplex that will be bringing the snow on a regular basis?
We, again, the responsibility in the J Street pedestrian walkway, which is a kind of a unique situation, is that the city plows a path down the middle, which we did. Let the business owners create openings from that path to their businesses, and they do the sidewalk right in front of the business. And that was all done, and then, okay, so you've got a path down the middle, you've got a path in front of each store, and you've got connectors to connect both, then you've got a big bunch of piles of snow. There's a lot of merchants that don't want those piles of snow. They want all of that snow out of there, they want it removed. It is not our obligation to remove that snow. We did it because of the amount of snow that was there, and the fact that it was melting during the day, and refreezing at night, and causing some issues where that center area was slippery, so I didn't want the liability to the city, I talked with Metroplex, we pulled it.
Okay, thank you.
In addition, DSIC is responsible for salting, and then Metroplex, when the snowbanks become kind of unruly, will come in and remove the snow. I'm actually meeting with J Street merchants tomorrow morning, so, you know, over that, and if there's any residual. They were very, very appreciative the last time they removed the snow, and all in the end of the month.
We want to try to work with all.
J Street's tough, you know? And the real issue there, as Carl said, is that we have a lot of merchants that are driving up and down that street and parking on the street. The last time I walked to City Hall in a snowstorm, those guy parked smack dab in the middle, DSIC came through, DSIC came through with their little gator, they were salting, and the guy had to sit there for like a minute and a half, and blow his horn, for the guy to come out, and then the guy just moved the car closer to the building. So I've been working daily with the merchants to identify when people are parking on there, and get, getting parking enforcement down there, because, and you know, another situation, there was somebody making a left off of State Street and wanting to make a left onto J to drive down to their store, there were pedestrians in the crosswalk, and this person was angry, and ended up slamming on the gas, whipping around by bombers, coming back around, and then making right on J Street, but really quite haphazardly, and I'm like, it's a pedestrian walkway! This is a privilege for you to be able to drop off in front of your store, or have your customers pick up, so, I mean, there's, and what they ended up doing is knocking down the snowbanks, and they knocked it down back into the walkway again. So it's, we're, I'm meeting with them tomorrow morning to discuss more.
Most of the merchants are really good.
But they're great, they keep good, clean sidewalks, and it's the people driving on J that are, and parking right in the middle of J during the snow, that it's, it's a problem.
While we talk about this, all the snow melted.
Yes, that's great!
Seven degrees.
Carl, thank you very much, I appreciate you coming in and educating us, thanks. All right, good? Anything else to report administrative inefficiency?
We've got administrative.
Marion, it is.
All favor? Hi. For Jerry.
All right, I'm going to call to order government operations. First thing we have is some discussion on the reorganization, or the proposed reorganization to office, office of general services. Just want to make a clarification, that Carl's proposal includes kind of two sections. One is the reorganization chart, and the structure of the department, another was a suggestion for stepped increments, and how we might encourage people to be willing to move into management positions. At this time tonight, the part of Carl's proposal that we'll be discussing, just to get things started and not take too big of a bite, is simply the reorganization of the department. We won't be talking about the stepped raise portion of Carl's proposal this evening. So Carl presented two weeks ago, so that the council could have some time to review his proposed plan of action, and this is based around creating a succession plan, so that we don't find ourselves in a similar situation to what we found ourselves about a year, six months ago, probably even, right? When we had a key person leave, and no one really trained to take his position immediately. We wondered how that could happen, so we're trying to avoid that happening. So, I'll entertain discussion, Mr. Olson, I'm sure there'll be some questions for you, and...
If I may, I'm wondering if there's a point in time that doesn't be relevant, for you to hear any comments from the hall of this?
Sure, do you want to start things off?
I must be.
Okay. You're at the floor.
Thanks, I appreciate that very much. Thanks, I appreciate that very much. So really before addressing this specifically, I just want to focus us in on the 2014 revenue budget specifically. And if you look at that, recognizing the agreed upon expenditure levels and the targeted tax rate, the city, as in prior years, appropriated $2.7 million of its reserves, i.e. savings, as potentially being needed to support its operations. So ideally, at the end of 2014, the city would want to have exceeded its revenue's expectations or gained operational efficiencies that together would result in our expenditures being less than revenues by about 2.7 so that we wouldn't have to use our savings to support operations. And, you know, that's certainly a challenging goal. And on top of that, we really wouldn't want to even see something even greater than that because we want to continue to, to reserve some money, have a larger cash base so that we can do more pay as you go for our various capital projects. So having said that, where we are right now is 2013 budget really presented us with a revenue expectation that was just not at all achievable. And we are probably in the situation where although we're going to have a surplus from operations that's anticipated, it's going to make us have to use some of the savings that we appropriated in the budget during 2013. That's not sustainable. You don't want to be using some of your savings all the time for your operations. So a component of any external review of our health is the commitment of its executive and legislative branches to its budget, its fiscal discipline. So I just suggest as we progress through the year that, that we take that to heart. That to heart meaning we want to manage our 2014 budget to minimally create the surplus of 2.7 and ideally even better than that. So, you know, with this in mind and with the ink, from my view, barely dried on this budget, I, I just, I'm uncomfortable saying to you, if, if you would like to hear this viewpoint, that it's just not fiscally prudent to move forward at this point in time. This budget is more than, and I'm quoting our Commissioner of General Services from a development session we had with the Budget of the City Council, it's more than just a piece of paper. I believe in it 110% and I believe that everybody here wants to try to live within it. And I just think that we are dancing around having a problem so early. So specifically, if you want to address the fiscal components of this proposal, for five of the six individuals, you are increasing salaries anywhere from 2.8 to 4%, in addition to the 1% raise already received by these individuals. One individual is increasing almost over 40%. Missing from this analysis anywhere is the requisite increase in certain fringe benefits and that's $41,000, I estimate, in 2014. But all I have in front of me is what was passed out from last time. I don't have any specifics other than that. So, and Mr. Howard was nice enough to, to walk me through this very quickly the other day and he did mention that, when I asked him about where we're taking monies from to support these increases, how we felt now that we could have savings there when during the budget process, we were sure that those were the numbers. And, and Anthony and I, along with our own staff, went through them and we agreed those were the numbers. Why, why is the money there now? So having said that though, I do have respect for these individuals and they could very well maybe manage to those lower levels. It's certainly possible. But I'd like to advance that there's no guarantee. You know, if you make changes between salary lines, you know for sure that change is going to be there because you've moved positions around. That's deliverable. This might not be. And even more important, there might not be other, there might be other lines in the 2014 budget where we go over or under. You don't know at this point in time. Additionally, I think in the proposal, it talks about particular savings that might occur over time. If the savings are dependent upon reduced, what I call non-personal service costs, I think it's difficult to say, to be definitive and project out two, three years in advance that those costs are going to continue to be at the levels they are. The last thing, and, and Mr. Barazzo mentioned it, is if you look at the steps that are being advanced, they appear to have, to have started maybe with our 2013 level because any of the salary increases that are being advanced in this amended budget, they don't equate to the steps. So if you go forward with this, I would suggest that it has to be revisited because none of the salaries equal the steps that are, that are in there for the individuals that we're talking about. And then if you look at the steps, you're committing the city to 4% increases for sure over time. 10 steps for, for the managers and seven steps for the Commissioner of General Services. That's certainly your prerogative, but it's, it's, it's a commitment of resources that I'm not sure we can be sure we have. So operationally, we're elevating six individuals either through a new, new positions or raising the salaries. And it's my understanding that during presentations to the various council members, that the dedication and value of BOs staff affected by the proposal was highlighted as exemplary. I am not here to tell you that I, that, that it's being questioned at all. That is, excuse me, that is not the issue at hand. The issue at hand is that there are, there are 38 other management employees as well as other city staff will not be afforded the same opportunity for ongoing advancement. That, you know, I, I just don't, I don't see how that, how that plays out very well. Many of these individuals are throughout the city. They're people that are in finance, which encompasses assessments, development, finance, IT, signals and receipt staff. Those people had the, they, you know, they were either management employees or moved into management, having the same expectations as bureau services individuals. So this isn't about people, some people being better than the other. It's just a matter of fairness and also it's a matter of resources. What, what does the city have? So I, I just am respectfully, or at least trying to respectfully, tell you that, that we can afford this. And we also can't afford, from an operational perspective, to surgically provide enriched benefits to a subset of management staff. It's demoralizing for other staff, many of which have come to me, because they feel left behind. They feel that they haven't been seen. And then additionally, it erodes our credibility with our other staff, our unions. Doesn't help us as we're sitting at a table negotiating a union contract, particularly having this discussion here, which I would have wished to not be in the situation to give. And then most importantly, or equally importantly, is the instance of the multi-wage scales proposed specifically for three individuals who are ready to retire, have, one of which has declared retirement and can retire, is, is the effect, the optic regarding our pensions and city retirement costs is at best not very favorable. So I, I just want to say, you know, I'm coming up on my one-year anniversary. I think I'm very, very proud to be here and I know you're very proud of the people that deliver the services to our taxpayers. But I'd like to suggest that some departments, some individuals may be less visible and certainly less vocal, but they are no less hardworking, committed and valuable. So I feel, I would prefer not to be here publicly challenging a colleague who I have respect for. I really would. But circumstances have put me here. And I feel it's my responsibility, the Commissioner of Finance, to provide the council with a fiscal lens from a very broad perspective. And at this point in time, I just advance that to increase these salaries as presented is not fiscally prudent. And if you are considering this, which certainly it is your prerogative to consider, I would at least ask you to, to potentially look at this later in the year and not at this point in time. And I really, really, really feel very strongly about this. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Before we move forward with discussion, I want to, again, reiterate that I do not want to get stuck in the quiet mire of these stepped raises tonight. I don't even want to open the discussion. It's not on the table. We're talking about reorganization. And the reason why we're talking about reorganization is because Carl is about five years away from retirement and Carl can't ever leave. But we have to, as a council, whether we talk about it today or we talk about it in the next cycle or whatever, but as a council, we need to not sit here in the future and say, how did we get here? We need to proactively address the infrastructure of one of the most departments, one of the most important departments in the city and the fact that it's the safety and well-being of our residents and how this, why don't we declare a snow emergency or not? So, that being said, I will open it up for general discussion and questions.
If I could comment on some of the comments that were made.
Absolutely. Yes, sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to bypass you, Mr. Olson.
I can wholeheartedly appreciate the financial position that the city is in. We have consolidated a number of areas of service over the past 10 years to anticipate the issues that we were having financially in the city. And the process, a number of individuals left, retired several years ago, and their positions were not backfilled. They were supposed to be able to be backfilled at some point and they never were. And I have individuals within my operations that stood up to the plate and are performing the work of a number of different titles under their title, one of which is Jeremy, who is my office manager. But if something happens to a facility and the city is connected, who do people call? Who does the fire department call? Who does the police department call? Who does anyone call when their facility has an issue? They call Jeremy. So apparently he's also our facilities manager. He was not the facilities manager until Ed Montgomery retired. Ed Montgomery was paid $80,000 a year to manage our facilities and do some work in our recreational components and parks, which incidentally Jeremy picked up those responsibilities as well, more or less out of default. No one else was here to apply that work. Jeremy gets paid $60,000 a year. So he's doing the work that Eddie was doing for 80. In addition to that, he's my office manager, which means he is, is responsible for the majority of the clerical functions in my budget. I don't think that's fair to Jeremy. Jeremy works not nine-five, Monday through Friday, but on evenings, on Saturdays, on Sundays. As a matter of fact, the non-union managers in my budget put in an incredible amount of overtime. They're not compensated for that overtime. So to be, in all fairness to unions, individuals within the unions are. Several members of the union that these individuals employ or manage make more than they do. When they go to retire, not just me, but a number of the managers that work for me are closer to retirement than I am. When they leave, what incentive to the individuals that they manage have to want to be promoted into that position? If they can make just as much or almost as much or even more in a non-union or in a union management position that reports to this individual and only be responsible for a third of what they would be responsible for if they took advantage of the promotion to become a non-union manager. I mean, we've created a lot of efficiencies in our operating budget over the past 10 years. And I depended upon a number of key individuals to, to be able to manage those positions, a number of which are now, and I've demonstrated that through our organizational chart, are ready to retire, as Deborah said, very close to retiring. Some are eligible now to be able to retire with 37 or 38 years of experience. When they leave, whether or not you agree with the reorganization plan, you can, if you do nothing, when those individuals leave, if we have difficulty finding replacements for them, I want you to be aware of options that are available to you that may provide better incentives. I really believe that the city and the taxpayers of the city are going to be better off if individuals with 20 years of experience, 15 years of experience, working in one of my divisions have an incentive to be able to become the non-union manager rather than hiring somebody off the street that has had no experience whatsoever in working those operations. Again, this is, these are decisions for you to make and us, for us to propose, but I don't, I'm not really sure as to why anyone would want to work in one of those non-union management positions in the future as these people leave.
I think one of the things, and I, I share Ms. DeGenova's concern with putting in a step structure for management in one department and what happens to the other department. But one of the things that I think is somewhat unique to the Office of General Services, the amount of overtime that is accrued where that is not accrued in other departments. So, you know, I see Mr. Olson's point in saying, you know, what's the incentive to go into management? But again, that conversation's for another day. Let's focus on the reorganization proposed. Mr. Erickson.
Okay. Now, I agree with you in terms of where the discussion, not really talking about the steps at this point, because it's kind of a, I think a different topic and believe that, I believe it's actually a bigger topic outside of just that organization. But is it possible we can talk about the reorganization in terms of staff responsibilities and reporting structure separately from the pay associated with each of those new jobs and positions? So if we want to change the structure, we can reorganize people to report to anybody we, you know, that the city feels is necessary. And then come up with the appropriate pay for those positions based on any kind of savings through elimination growth. So you're kind of just recreating a structure and then reallocating the same amount of dollars into that same structure. From a management perspective, that's kind of how I would kind of look at it, is divide how much, you know, person A is going to make from who, the structure. From a governmental procedure or process perspective, I would feel that it's the mayor's organization to designate whom he wants reporting to whom, what kind of overall structure he would like to see within his organization. And for the council then to say, we will fund that or we won't fund that. Now, we all have our own opinions and we're all outspoken people, so by all means, I wouldn't expect us to just not put in our own two cents of what we like in terms of the structure of, hey, I'd like to see this happen versus that. But I think from a, from an organization or reorganizational effort, it really needs to come from the mayor to say, this is how I want my organization to be. To have a department head come to us saying, I want to organize the structure this way, I'm, I'm not sure if we're the ones that would decide. I mean, we have seven of us or six of us, right? I'm not sure if we could come to a conclusion or a decision on every single person who to report to and that kind of thing. I mean, I, I am in favor of a reorganization to solve the dilemma that you're speaking of in terms of making sure we have redundancy and understand that if one person leaves, the ship doesn't sink. But how that is structured, I think, needs to come from the operational side of the business, which is the mayor's position. That's just my opinion.
I just want to rewind for one minute because we sat here at budget time. Mr. Olson came to the table and he went over his budget with us and he said, I have to be honest with you, I have some ideas. I have some ideas as how I would like to reorganize that I think would save the city money and support my retirement as such. And we said, holy cow, bring them to him, bring them to us, let us see them. So I feel a little, I don't disagree with your statement that the mayor should be on board and all that, but we asked Mr. Olson to come and bring up these ideas. And now we're saying, well, wait a minute, why is the department head coming?
No, no.
Just in Mr. Olson's defense.
No, true, true, true. And I agree with you and we did. And I'm not saying I don't want to see it or I'm not interested. I, I went to the meeting that Carl had. To me, it looked like a good structure. It looked like a sound format for organizational structure. There's financial concerns and then at the end of the day, it's the mayor's job to say, this is how I want it. For us to go, yeah, I think it's a pretty good idea. We're on board, right? So, so yeah, by all means, I think we encouraged it. I encouraged all the departments to say, hey, I have an idea, let's, let's talk about it.
And ultimately it is our vote on budget reallocation, which I think is why we're here.
Right.
I can assure you that I discussed everything that I discussed with the seven members of council with the mayor.
Okay.
That I can assure you. I think he would verify that when you speak to him.
Other questions, other discussion? Mr. Reiki, sorry.
It's okay.
Multiple. Go ahead.
Oh.
We might have the same question.
Oh, we're fine. Now, you know, I, I came to your meeting as well. And one of my, my questions and my concerns is something that we've talked about, about succession planning and about people retiring and, and how all of that works. But this really, my concern really centers more around training. I know there's training dollars in the budget already, so. So I, I really kind of wanted to talk about or receive if it's somehow included in the reorganization in terms of the training for these employees. I, I know that there's this, we get emails all the time from this place called Loroman where they offer trainings.
We don't have any training dollars in our budget that I worry about.
I, I saw that in there. Okay, I'll revisit that, but if not, I, I think it's something we should certainly consider because if we're talking about people who are going to be taking on other responsibilities or they're going to move off, we as a city should be having people up to date on whatever skill set it is that they need in order to perform that job. And I know that we're, there's some of the information that's passed on historically, but there are new things out that are happening and, and, you know, new ways of doing things. It's like, I wouldn't go to a doctor who never got his training upgraded because I figure like, you know, if, if I didn't do some medical school, I'm scared.
We do take advantage of opportunities to train employees free of charge. Getting college has been far-fetched in providing us with some computer training classes for individuals, in particular managers, CSEA supervisors, as well as clerical people to better be able to better utilize Access Excel, Microsoft Word, the different tools that they use on a daily basis to perform the work. We have safety training provided to us. We have EAP training provided to us. There's a number of training classes that we, we expose our employees to that are either provided through grants or through free services from institutions that, that help us. And it's handled that way, again, because I think what Deborah had said earlier, not a lot of extra money available to spend. So in an austerity budget, so he's trying to save money and trying to reach out to provide training. provide training and ways to do costless money.
And the trainings that you made, and the trainings I'm talking about are not so much the, you know, Excel, but actually, there's one specifically, actually, that I saw that really brought this to mind, it was a training, it's a webinar, which means several people could attend, and it was around wastewater treatment. And so, you know, that particular one was $500, and so that means several people could sit in front of the computer. So those are the kind of things that I'm talking about now. You're saying that there are no training dollars in the budget, but maybe it's something we could look under, make some efficiency.
And our wastewater treatment plan is, we do train individuals, we train our 3A applicants, 3A licensed applicants, so individuals that are trained to become 3A licensed operators. We provide training to, they take exams, it's a four-and-a-half-year process before they can sit for their exam to get their 3A license. So there is some training provided to them, a lot of it is on the job training, and the manuals that are provided for them to study, so they can sit down and take exams to get licensed in their 3A position. But other than our wastewater treatment operation, I'm not aware of training for buttermains' workers, sewer maintenance workers, strip maintenance workers, waste collection workers, engineering department employees.
This particular place was offering you kind of stuff. And I'm not just talking about for your, the departments that you oversee, I think it's something that we should probably consider, perhaps, for the, you know, for any training that's available for all departments within the city, in terms of, you know, new systems and things that are being used or available, those kind of things. I think it would be worthwhile as a city, so we'll figure out about the funding. I thought there really were training dollars, but if there aren't, then...
I believe there are in the way, in the police and fire departments, there's training dollars, but not in the, not public safety unions.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Reiki?
Yes, my pleasure. I agree with a few things that were said here tonight. I mean, ultimately, it is the mayor's call on how his departments are organized, it's not the city councils. I know we're dancing around the funding, but I don't see how we have a reorganization without the funding, and that's our job, the funding. So it all goes back, and we have our finance director that's strongly advising that we look at this later in the year, so there's a lot of conflicting ideas going on here. The problem, I mean, just to be honest, the problem is, the elephant in the room is our public safety unions. They have binding arbitration, they have step increases that the other employees, so most of the other employees for the city, other than public safety, aren't happy. That's the bottom line, when, that's what the bottom line is, and I don't know what we can do about that, other than say, everybody gets 4% step increases, and then that puts us in another bind, so this is a quagmire without a question, but are we going to discuss, okay, how do we okay his reorganization of his department? That's the part I don't understand. Are we here to okay that? He can reorganize, but I don't think there's any reorganization without the pay that goes with it, because otherwise, we're back where we started. That's what it seems like. It was mayor's prerogatives not to replace our, when Bill Seaver retired, we didn't replace our parks director, when Eddie Montgomery retired, we didn't replace the maintenance supervisor, so that's the mayor's prerogative to do this. Where that money went to, I can't tell you. All I know is it was there, the job isn't there anymore, that position isn't being filled, so we can reorganize, but there has to be money to do that, so I don't know, our role, I'm confused on what our role is here. I don't think it is, per se, the reorganization of the department, that's administrative duties, that isn't city council duties. Our job is, we're contract and supply, is to supply the money to this reorganization. So I'm kind of confused in about our role is actually in this, other than funding these positions, or possibly funding these positions. But I don't know how we can compete when we have two different entities in the city. We have unions here, and we have unions there, but these unions are treated different because they have binding arbitration. The other unions don't, so I can understand why workers aren't happy. They all work hard, I understand that, you know, we hear, I heard from CSEA, they make some very good points, you know, that they're not being treated fairly. So I don't know how we can actually overcome this, I really don't know, I really have some real questions and moral questions about it, how the system is working, but that's my thoughts on this.
Just for clarification, Mr. Reiki, I think there's two different things. One, and I asked Mr. Olson to separate them out, because I thought there were too, there was too much to deal with together. One is amendments to the 2014 budget, which would allow Mr. Olson to reorganize his department along with how the mayor sees fit, right? That's really what we're voting on here, not whether, you know, this or that or any other thing, but, you know, are we willing to reorganize his budgetary lines so we can add a deputy commissioner, right? That's what we're voting on. Or are we also voting on step pay raises contractually for management and OGS, which we've taken off the table for now, right? So just for clarification, that's that. But I do believe, you know, I agree that, you know, certainly it's the mayor's prerogative on how things are stacked. But I think also this came about as just to try to, you know, create a succession plan also, which ultimately, you know, the mayor could, it's just like our deputy chief, you know? We'd like a succession, I'd like a succession plan for our fire chief, but the mayor has different ideas, so, you know, our thing is budgetary. Mr. Montgomery?
Restructuring is good, something that is very good for the city, but the question is, I'm knowing that a financial problem that we're in, is there any consideration being given to combine the office manager with the new position, deputy commissioner, and to arrive at savings, and move forward with the reorganization?
The deputy commissioner would continue, would have to perform management oversight over the facilities division of the city's faculty, the recreation departments of the parks operation, as well as pools, and the operation of pools, in addition to that, would have to work with me and all of the different areas, the other 13 agencies that we supervise, to be able to be trained as to how to deal with those other entities. We have four separate fund divisions, water, sewer, golf, and general fund divisions, that those agencies fall under. We have 247 permanent employees, and a handful of non-union management staff, but it's not compensated for overtime, and I can assure you, they're working significant amounts of work. Shall I, should I continue? If we just say, well, the city doesn't have a lot of money in the bank, and we need to save more money, then why don't we get rid of four or five of those managers and put all of that responsibility on one individual? And they can stay here 24 hours a day, we'll put a little cot in the hallway for them to lay down on, if they get a chance to lay down.
I think we should chain them in.
But seriously, where does it end? Where does it end, where the individual is not going to, is made responsible to be on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to perform these duties, and not given any compensation? So your area of responsibility has increased dramatically. What you need to do now is change from what you used to have to do when you took your job as the office manager. And now, in addition to that, we're going to require that you do A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, L, X, Y, and Z. A lot of that is going to be on off-hours, and we're not going to compensate you for that. Is that being appropriate and fair to those employees? There never used to be any non-union management employees, other than myself and my operation. And we talked to individuals because the council was concerned about the cost of overtime in operations. So to reduce the overtime in the operations, we eliminated certain union supervisory positions and changed them to non-union management positions. And at the time, it was the understanding of the individuals that went into those positions, that there would be steps. Those steps never occurred. Things changed where before, the administration set people's salaries, then the council set the salaries, and the council didn't know that the administration had promised these individual steps, and then the administration relinquished that promise, and the council was in the dark and didn't know what was going on with that, therefore, rightfully, didn't agree with it. So now you have individuals that would have been much better off if they just stayed in the unit. And where, when they're have to work 75, 80, or 90 hours in a given week, they're going to be compensated accordingly. So that being the case, wonderful, they are getting ready to retire, I don't think they're going to leave until they are ready to retire. Just because you can take advantage of them doesn't mean you should. And who are you going to take advantage of next, after they leave? Who that is there and understands the operations, understands the commitment, the responsibility, the amount of work that has to be done in order to achieve success in those areas? And we don't get a lot of complaints about the work that we have to perform, that it's a continuous operation. We work seven days a week, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, in a lot of different areas. Who is going to put themselves into that position to be taken advantage of because we can? We've already had a lot of difficulties filling positions of non-union management positions in this operation, when they needed to be posted and filled, and we needed to get applications from individuals. We've had difficulty. I would assume we're going to have more difficulty in the future. I don't want to leave this organization without the appropriate process in which individuals can become non-union managers to really run the daily operations. I don't think that that would be responsible with myself. September 27th, I am eligible to retire. If half of my non-union managers leave here, and then we can't replace them, I care enough about what we do here that I will probably become sick, unhealthy, trying to cover those I don't think that's a good idea for the taxpayers of the city, and I don't think it's a good idea for my family or myself. So somebody should start thinking about who is going to be responsible to perform this work, and how they should be compensated to perform it. And I spent over an hour with each and every one of you, and to describe to you some of the responsibility that some of these individuals have. The one with the 40% increase is not a non-union manager, he is a union assistant supervisor that is 100% supervising waste collection, on a regular basis, because that's his job, he has to do that. I don't have another supervisor to assist him. So is it appropriate for me to pay him at the rate of an assistant supervisor when he is supervising a $6 million a year operation? Wouldn't it be appropriate that I pay him at the supervisory rate? In accordance with the CSEA bargaining unit agreement, in accordance with civil service, I'm under the impression that I'm supposed to do that. If I require somebody to work on a grade on a consistent basis, I should post that position in the format that it should be in. I can't do that without the approval of the administration, the city council. But again, how would you like me to run the operation if I can't compensate the individual for the work that they are performing? What do I do when they tell me I'm not going to do it anymore?
Well, I think that this needs to be an ongoing discussion, and I think it, you know, is not something we should put off for a half a year, we should continue to talk about this and look at this, and come to consensus on, with the mayor, what this is going to look like going forward, because I agree with a tremendous amount of what Mr. Olson is expressing, and I also think that, you know, we need to come up with what this is going to look like going forward, and, you know, I would just hate to see us get caught in the quagmire of our own discussions, and then end up in a position of, you know, having to hire somebody that's more expensive than this, because it's the only person that applies, and we have to pay, and we've been through that before too, right? This is, but this is the only person that can be hired, and they demand $20,000 more than the position posted for. So, you know, in our own proactiveness, I think, you know, this kind, this, if anybody has any more questions or discussion tonight, that's fine, I get the impression people want to gather more information and have more discussions, but I am not really willing to put it away as a...
When I came here 23 years ago, I didn't start at $95,000 a year. When I came here 23 years ago, I started at $38,000 a year. So it took a while, and by having some experience, and by performing the work, and performing the work to people's satisfaction, I was given opportunities to be promoted. Each promotion usually came with a reorganization plan, where my operation continued to take on more and more responsibility, and the managers that worked very hard for me were given management positions, being recognized for the work that they performed, and we continued to do that. Again, that took years to get to the point where we're earning the salaries that we're earning. We didn't just come here six months ago at a salary of $95,000 or $100,000 a year. Each and every one of the people that is working here has been working, all those individuals that we're talking about, collectively probably have 150 or 175 years of experience. I think that's worth noting as well.
Yeah, which speaks to my comment that we don't want to take years to make this decision. So any other questions or comments?
I just want to say, and I think I said this last time, I really like the restructuring, and I think they did a really good job with doing that. I do agree that there's a financial issue here that we've got to deal with, and I also feel like, as we look at people moving into new positions, taking on additional responsibility, that we should figure out some way to reward them, but we need to do it across the board, you know, obviously, this is one proposal for one unit within the city, but we clearly got people in other areas that have taken on additional responsibilities as well. So we need to be kind of looking at this in a little bit bigger picture, you know, to try to be fair to everybody.
Yeah, and I agree, and I, and, but I also think that stopping the conversation right now is not a beneficial thing.
Absolutely.
I think this is huge, I think it is also for the well-being of the future of the city, and we just need to keep slogging through it.
Yes.
Until we find a viable solution to protect the city, and protect our workers, and protect our residents, within working, you know, while working within our budget, and keeping a handle on those tax increases, because I want my money back from the state. Stay under that cap. So any other questions, comments, concerns for Mr. Olson? Sit down and rest.
I got him.
Please. Those should be easy, I hope. All right, discussion of moving properties into the land bank, Mr. Erickson.
So this was something I wanted to put on last cycle. I know there was some movement on activities with article in the paper, with Land Bank getting engaged on Eastern, and I'm not sure if there's anyone here that, the mayor might be here, but you're not. So is there...
That was just an effort to keep this discussion short. They were not planning that at all, they're like, quick, get it in the paper. Well, Mr. Streichman, is Eric, he probably can speak to this?
Is there anything that's ready for public, I mean, between the time I asked for this to go on, and today, we had, you know, obviously, the news, everything, it went in the paper. So I was really, at that time, looking for an update, saw something in the paper, I'm not sure if there's anything else to add to it, but I'm glad to see that the land bank is now being utilized, right? And the goal is to utilize it more, such that next time the state goes around handing out money, they say, hey, your land bank is doing a good job, we'll give you some state money to keep the progress going. And that's really what we needed to do to kickstart it. So is there anything else to add to, Steve?
I don't think so, really. I mean, we are moving and taking some properties and moving to the ability of our funding right now, and making some progress on Eastern Avenue. And at this point now, I think we need, if we have the ability to take too many more properties with the amount of money the management, we don't have to make much of a difference. So we're moving in that direction, and we will make a request for properties in the future, and right now.
Okay. I mean, for the next round, sort of June, July, you know, at some point during this year, the state will be coming back and saying, hey, who do we give this money to? And it's different land banks across the state. Are we working on a, kind of a strategy to say, hey, if we were to get X amount of dollars, this is what we can do, so that our request is perfect, right? Our request is ready to kind of leverage a large gift versus a...
We're working on the law term plan and grant application now to be ready for it to. So we'll have a report to the whole city council over in March, so we'll update you then of preparing, whether we're preparing over it or not.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, very good. Moving on to, a couple weeks ago, well, actually, I think about three or four weeks ago, in executive session, we were talking about different properties. We also discussed that we'd like to actually get a quarterly update on where the properties that we're selling off stand, what has been done with them, if things are progressing. So I did ask Mr. Schilling, who I guess spoke with Mr. Streichman, to come and give us a quarterly report on where our sold properties stand. So take it away, Mr. Streichman.
Okay, we've been working quite some time on creating a property database, like that DeGenova, we've got an access database now where we can manage the properties, and this information is pulled right out of there. Now, this is a work in process report for you, so this is our first attempt to give you what you're looking for. It has all the properties that we sold. It has all the properties that we sold going down the left column chronologically. So you want to make, your request was to make sure that the properties that we sell, we are following up to make sure they pull their permits on time and that their owner occupied as such. A lot of this information, we had to create new fields, and we were working on this, but we were creating new fields, and the information was updated today, and some of that, one of our people was out due to a death in the family, and some of it also was not in there. So like I say, this is a work in process, so if you have comments of things you want to see or don't want to see, I certainly don't want to design this by committee here right now, but you can get your, get your comments back to me. But you can see what we have is, we have a date, the permit is pulled, permit details, and the column codes completed is basically if they have met their requirements. Have they pulled their permits, or even, it may even be not required, because some places like Ardsley Road, nothing really was required there on that, didn't need any permits. So I'm not sure what you want to see, if you want to see an ongoing list, this is 21 properties that we did sell. The owner occupancy confirmed, we're going to have to do that annually, so once a year we're going to have to go out and do that. So I'm still trying to figure out how to get this report to you in a, in a way that makes sense, how to add properties back on in a year, you know, they come off now if they're code compliant, but then in a year, they're going to have to go back on the report again to show you that we have to check the code compliance. But you can see with those properties, you know, we're probably a little over half of them are in compliance with the permit being required, and we still need to go out now and check on the owner occupancy on most of those properties. And a lot of them don't require owner occupancy.
I think this was the majority of what we were looking for, however, it's my understanding that they have a timeline to this program where the property, if they don't bring it up to code in X amount of time, it'll revert back to the city. I'd like to track that too, to make sure they're staying on their timeline. Maybe it's even a matter of when the timeline expires that we know the work is done or isn't done. I don't know that you can give us, you know, progress reports per se, but, you know, just to whether, okay, you know, timeline deadline is, you know, 12, 13, 15, was it met? No. And then, so we know where that property stands at that point.
Right, I believe most of them are given a year to bring it up to code, but again, we'll go back and check on each of those. So you have a sale date, for instance, the first property, August 1st, and if the code's complete, is done, then, you know...
Well, that works, it's a year, if, if universally it's a year, then that's all we need to do.
We could, so we'll check, and if there's any that are different from a year, actually some of them are, so we could add another field that says what their condition's worth.
Yeah, okay.
Weren't somebody, a contractor program home, that was less than a year, I thought it was like 120 days, does that sound like that?
It was all flexible, but the 120 days was like the default they were going to work off of, and based on the facts and circumstances of each individual product, if it could be a project, we can change.
There was only a handful, I think, of those that we did, but are they on this